All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's two oh six P M. My name is Ty Mensor, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier and Commissioner Gary Edwards. And on Zoom is Commissioner Carolina Mejia and Commissioner Emily Claus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell and Josh Cummings are here. And we have our two standing items for check in. First up is reports on external boards and commissions. Commissioner Edwards?
On the Board of Health, the Education Committee, I want to say that was on Friday. And we just came up with some topics, I guess, if you will, that are applicable. The loneliness thing that the county manager sent out kind of fits in with that particular area as well and with the AAA of the other board of AAA that I sit on. So nothing drastic. Just picking along.
Okay. Questions for Commissioner Edwards? Go ahead, Commissioner Fournier.
Oh, okay. I'm on that statewide jail modernization task force with through WASC on the Ruckelhaus study thing. And I had a several hour interview with them last week, basically asking me questions about various jail concepts and things that could be done to kind of modernize the way that jailing is done statewide. We talked about workforce development, training programs. We talked about technology in how we manage offenders, I guess. And that was the last of the interviews. And then, starting in December, we'll go into monthly group meetings where there'll be, you know, there's a county representative for Western Washington, county representative from Eastern Washington, there's industry experts, there's representatives from WASPIC, and it'll be fun. It sounds like it's going to be a really interesting group to be a part of.
Are you guys working towards a set of recommendations to the legislature?
Yep. Is that what? Yep. So it was a budget proviso that was that was passed through the legislature to the Ruckelhaus group, and they'll come and build some kind of volume of recommendations or something to that effect. I don't know. I've never done it before, so.
So one thing that I would.
I did tell them to talk to you, too.
Okay.
We have a county commissioner that also was a public defender that probably has some things that he'd like to share with you.
If it comes up, when Commissioner Mejia and I were at NACO like two summers ago, I went to a presentation and they were describing the Houston Women's Facility. I don't know if this has come up, but it like, it's like, they got, part of what they were describing is how they got it funded. And I can't remember the details of that. But because they were able to kind of get it funded and kind of, it's new, so it's kind of at the forefront of this sort of modern way of thinking about rethinking, you know, incarceration, they were able to kind of design it and build it to the specifications. And it just sounded like, wow, this is kind of what a jail ought to be. I mean, it's got educational stuff built into it and treatment stuff built into it and all this stuff. So, I mean, that'd be one that I'd want to look like deeper at, like the Houston Women's Facility, just in terms of, it's got accountability, but it's got rehabilitation, and it's all kind of integrated. So anyway, if that comes up, yeah, take a look at that.
I attended the Green Cove tour. That was, that was really cool. My, most of us were out there. And the mayor's meeting, you can, you can speak on that, but I attended the mayor's meeting alongside Commissioner Mensor. I had a good meeting with Paul Jewell from WASC. I just wanted to kind of pick his brain and talk about the, the way in which county commissions get legal representation statewide and kind of get some history on, on how we ended up where we are as a state and kind of like the framework for, I guess, how that is laid out. And it was, it was an interesting discussion.
Did he know a lot about that?
Yeah, yeah. And he said that, that just the dynamic of how, you know, county government gets legal advice from their elected prosecutors is, it's, it's, it's not uncommon to have friction. And, you know, it's kind of not, not the traditional client attorney relationship. And there's been places where it has devolved, like devolved into huge, you know, near fistfights. There was one county, like Skagit County or something, that had a big dust up several years ago. And he did say that there are other, you know, if, if, if the commissioners aren't getting the representation that they, and I'm, not that we're in, anyone's in this situation, but, you know, like, we, you know, we want to hire an outside attorney for something. And we've been told, well, you got to go to the prosecutor's office. Prosecutor's office has to do that. That, that's yes. But also, if that's not working, you can go straight to a, to a judge. And you can have the judge assign outside counsel in certain situations. So I thought that was all interesting. And then I, I did attend the JazzCon meeting, which Commissioner Klaus was also at. And they were reviewing the, the rates that they would be proposing to us. And there was something like an eight percent increase that they were going to be coming to us for.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. Okay. It went up since the meeting.
So they, they review the details of that with you all?
Yes.
I had a question to Sarah. Was it something that they asked you to take action on? Or were they, were they just reviewing it?
They were reviewing it. And it's, from what I understood, that that's what they're going to send to us.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's a request, or if it's by contract, or maybe Robin.
They generally send a notice at this time to the jurisdictions because all of us are preparing our budgets, and we need something to put in. And then, I believe the JazzCon process is much like the county process. Well, they're actually past the budget in either November or December.
And then the field rebates that we'd had in the past, they will not be?
No rebate this coming year in two thousand and twenty-five. And it's my understanding, I'm sorry, go ahead. It's my understanding that that's because they've filled all their positions at this point, and they're providing services.
Yep. And my question was, is that something like those percentage increases? Is that something the JazzCon Board approves? Are staff just sending those out based on costs?
There, there's like a per capita calculation that they have. So I think it was based on the number of residences.
I don't believe the contract has a specified amount of increase, like it's not a C P I or anything like that.
That's right.
So that's where I'd be looking for them to have, someone should be verifying that information before. Ten percent is a significant increase.
Yeah, a million dollars, I think.
Commissioner Claus, go ahead.
Thank you. I had a few notes on that from the JazzCon meeting. The, the rate increase was just an estimate, so it wasn't anything that was set in stone. And because of the fact that there's no field rebates this year, that actually helped us out because if there were field rebates, then the cost increase could have been up to twenty-five percent. I also wrote down that the ten percent includes COLAs and STEPs. And there was a question about whether it included inflation. I can't remember what the answer was, but I believe they said it was included. So that's what I have on that from JazzCon.
And Commissioner Klaus, my, my question is, did the JazzCon Board approve that rate? Or is staff just informing the group that's what they're going to be sending out?
There was no vote on.
No.
So.
There was no vote. It was, they said that the staff conversations haven't quite started yet. So this was just preliminary conversation prior to staff conversations. And there was, I think we'll be seeing more about the costs and the rates in November, along with the potential costs of the building. And that's the other conversation they're having at the same time. So I believe we'll be seeing more solid estimates or costs in November.
Okay. My perspective is, at a ten percent increase, I'm going to want to see the details of that increase because that's an expensive operation to be increasing double digits. Not to say it's unwarranted. It just means it's expensive. And, yeah, so I'll be asking to see detail from.
Sure. Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions in regards to that. My first, well, just for historical context, just in the past, you do vote on the rate increases. It's going to happen once the budget is approved. So that's how the rate increases are rolled up for JazzCon. So that will be coming in later on. And I served on JazzCon for two years. So just a little bit of, so that will come in front of the JazzCon Board, Leonard. So maybe having a conversation with the representative of JazzCon and just kind of letting them the boards. I, I appreciate you saying that, Leonard, and finding out more information because I also would like to know more. And I think the board really needs to make a decision on whether we are going to be moving full, like, we're going to be moving forward fully with the JazzCon contract, or if we're not. Kind of, we've kind of hung out in limbo of where we are at. And yet, there are still community members who are very frustrated with the services that they are receiving. So.
What I can do then, Commissioner, with the board's agreement, is start to frame that conversation so we can bring it back to the full board for a discussion.
Okay. I, you know, I, something that I learned that I, I find interesting is that, you know, we do, we fund something like fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two percent of their entire budget, yet we have very little say in their operations. You know, like, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the pie chart, and as far as who funds that operation. And, you know, we have, like, one vote amongst whatever, seven. And it just seems, you know, like, I, I don't know, I, it seems like more influence or more kind of a control over the services would be warranted when you're funding the entire operation almost. I don't, you know, it's.
Sounds like King County at WASC, Commissioner Fournier.
Kind, I mean, yeah, it's kind of a similar, similar conversation. But, you know, like, it, it just, there's nothing, it, yeah, I mean, I guess that's the end of the, my statement, but it's something to think about, I guess.
I guess I'll just chime in there. It is a bit lopsided, what the commissioner's bringing up.
Okay. Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I just gonna go back to Leonard. I think he asked for Commissioner's input on having a future work session about this. And so I guess I'll just give my thumbs up for that.
Okay. I was calling on you for external committee reports.
Okay. And I, I mean, there's still the question about, do we want this future work session? I just want to give clear direction to staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a majority?
Yeah.
I see three thumbs. So Commissioner Klaus, your hand, is that a thumb? There's a thumb on that hand, but.
I do just have a question. As far as a work session, what exactly would that work session look like? Because I know Leonard and myself and Sarah, we've had conversations about, like, some ideas that the county manager had on potentially restructuring the way we have work sessions and conversations. And I'm just wondering, would we want to bring Sarah into that? Or would it be a board work session? And, yeah, just any more context around the work session that's being requested.
Sure. Thanks, Commissioner Claus. My perspective is, based on what Commissioner Mejia had to say about there being some outstanding questions about JazzCon, I would like to hear from commissioners what those questions are, so that then we can round those up. That would be the nature of the work session, is rounding up the questions. And where, because to Commissioner Mejia's point, I think some folks, there was a start of a conversation that may not have been concluded. And so bringing that back to see if there's any discussion. I don't know if we need Sarah at the meeting unless there's specific questions about JazzCon's operation, in which I would gather those up, give Sarah a heads up so she could come prepared to talk about those. If there's some groundwork that I would do with each commissioner to see what exactly they'd like to talk about regarding JazzCon.
I'll just say that I'm okay with, like, I mean, eventually, we're going to have to have Sarah. Now, if it's good, if it's better to have one session where we round up commissioner concerns, and then a second session with Sarah, but like, I can, the reason I was kind of abstaining right there is just because, like, I don't, I've heard a lot of the commissioners' concerns over the years. And it's no disrespect to my seatmates. We, we're not experts on their operation. And so we, we, we have legitimate questions, but we don't have legitimate answers. So we just keep asking questions, and they float into the air. And unless Sarah's here to, to tell us what the answer is to that, I don't see that we're going to get anywhere. So eventually, I'd like to circle this back to where we can have that back and forth, because I'm going to have a bunch of questions, and I'm going to want answers. And I'm, I'm certain that we're not going to have them internally. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess I'd like to follow up on that. I don't know if we're still contemplating doing something with the sheriff on this whole thing or not. So somewhere, he's got to fit in that equation as to what problems there are, what solutions as well. I just throw that out there. So I don't, I don't know where that's going to fit, but at some point.
And Commissioner Mensah, to your point, I would want to get those, get the questions, make sure that, and I think Sarah probably is aware of some of them, but make sure Sarah has them so she could come ready to answer those questions. Because I agree, we don't have the answers to those. We're not into their operations. And to what Commissioner Klaus mentioned, it would be my desire to have that conversation. And if you would like Sarah there so that she's aware, prepared, and can come, and we can just go through systematically the questions the board has and facilitate discussions about what we're trying to accomplish.
Let's, that sums up for me, then.
Okay.
So we've got direction there. Anything else, Commissioner Mejia, on that?
No, that's it. I am about to enter a choppy zone. So can you skip me for a little bit before?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Claus?
I don't have anything.
Okay. For me, I will report on the mayor's meeting, which Commissioner Fournier and I were at. And it was pretty interesting. It was, in addition to just sharing different items, we had a presentation from the local organizing committee for the World Cup that's coming to Seattle and basically coming to our state, to our region, because we're, we're treated as like a, in combination with Vancouver, they're trying to get a synergy between people that will come to the Pacific Northwest.
Vancouver, B C.
Yeah, Vancouver, B C, to see games, because there's games up there and there's games here. We get six games, a round of, four of them will be group stage, one will be round of thirty-two, one will be round of sixteen. And then we will have at least two U S games, I think, during group stage. So, yeah, it'd have to be during group stage, which is overall a pretty good package of, of games to have. Tickets, of course, everyone's curious about. You got to go onto a website and log in for updates. There's going to be different types of ticketing. Some of it's going to be lottery, some of it's going to be first come, first served, some of it's going to be something else. You got to get on there and deal with that. But what we were talking about was how to work together as a region to capitalize and, and be prepared, and also to be able to advantageously take advantage of all the, all the tourism and economic activities.
It's exciting.
There's going to be nine, there's going to be a huge fan zone in Seattle, but there's going to be nine other places where there are like regional fan zones. And Olympia is, or Thurston County area could be one of those. And we all said, yes, we're interested in hearing more about that. And so throwing our name into that hat, if you've seen those on TV, it's like big screens and lots of people come and watch and have a party and while different, there's something big in December happening when they're going to draw like the, the groups or something. So you're going to actually know like what, which, which countries are going to be here. So that'll be really kind of exciting. Practice facilities all over the state, that certain countries will be, like, there'll be one country in Spokane that is camped there and practicing there. There'll be another in Vancouver, Portland. And they're anticipating like seven hundred and fifty thousand people from out of the country coming to visit the state throughout that month. And with internet, with them being international travelers, it's not like somebody just flying in for a Seahawks game that day. They will come in from places all over the world and probably stay two, three weeks. And they're likely to travel all over the state. And we leave Seattle and go check out, you know, the rainforest. And so, you know, we want to work with the Visitor Convention Bureau to make sure that, you know, maybe once the countries are identified, the, you know, the Thurston County area can be marketed in those countries on the, you know, online to come visit when they come here. It's kind of the concept. And this, they started out with some stats. If you're not a soccer fan, they started out with some stats about the World Cup, worldwide viewing. It makes the Super Bowl look like your Pee Wee, like.
Yeah, seven times the amount of viewers as, as the Super Bowl, wasn't it?
I, I don't remember the scale, but it was just orders of magnitude more people watch it and follow it than anything in the United States. So we're going to be, you know, we're going to be, Seattle's going to be in, in a worldwide spotlight, which will be really cool. Our whole region can plug into that. So that was great. We got contact information and some additional information about that. I wanted to report real quickly on the Office of, sorry, I'm on the Office of Public Defense Community Advisory Group. And I represent WASC on there. And the, there was an interesting issue that came up because the goal was to, for the committee to review and approve the budget request that will be made by the O P D to the legislature. But a couple of groups came in and said, we all know about the caseload standards for public defense, but correspond, and, and in that case, there's a proposal to like step it up over three years. Well, there was corresponding caseload revisions to appellate case, attorney caseloads and family, family law stuff, family, children-related stuff. And those did not have the ramp up. Like, those were adopted and by the Board of Governors, and there's no like ramp up, like, they're operative. So like, the appellate attorneys were there saying, our contract says we have to stay in compliance with W B A standard, you know, A B A standards and W S B A, Washington State Bar Association standards. So they can, like, the, the caseload, it's usually thirty-six appellate cases in a year is going to twenty-five. So that's, that change is now in effect, at least vis a vis W S B A, which affects the contracts that our appellate attorneys are subject to. So they were there to say to us as a community advisory committee and to the director, directors and leadership at Office of Public Defense, put this in your budget right now. You need to ask for it because it's, you know, it's going to hit us. The staff of O P D was resisting that. They said, no, we have worked through our budget. We have a plan. We're, they are asking for additional appellate attorneys, kind of from a pre-existing series of backlog issues. They said, you know, we're. They said, you know, we're, we're making a historic number of asks for public defense in our overall budget. Cause another part of their budget is, is trying to get money for us to help us with this coming potential transition. So OPD was basically saying, we're asking for historic amounts of money. We, we don't wanna strain our, our credibility with the legislators. And you couldn't hire all these people if you were given the money because of workforce issues and short. We need to, we need to come up with a, a plan, we need to think this through and come up with a plan to ramp up how we're gonna get all those new appellate attorneys up and going. Well, that was not met with very receptively by the, um, groups that were there to advocate for an immediate budget ask. So that was just kind of an interesting policy thing and it could end up coming, you know, to us at some point, uh, in terms of our, our overall approach to public defense and our funding asks and everything. So I just wanted to let you guys know about that. And then finally law, uh, two things there that I wanted to highlight. One is, uh, they're, we're at the very tail end, they're off cycle of our biennial budget by a year. So they're at the very tail end of a biennium. And the, the revenue coming in and the, and, and the existing obligations are like right at the, the bear nub, which is mainly because of a half million dollar increase in insurance, uh, rate. So they don't like to be quite that tight, uh, because you never know what can happen the last month or two. So they're, they're gonna make an opera, a, a mail, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna, it's like five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar transfer that just, the exact amount of the insurance increase, transfer into operating budget by the ILA that we have. We're gonna get a letter just notifying us that they intend to do that. And if we have objection, we can, you know, register that within thirty days or whatever. But just as a heads up, when you see that, that's what it is.
We received, yeah, we received.
You've received it already?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Matt did a great job, just, I really appreciate, uh, him reaching out to Amy and giving us a heads up, uh, that it, that it's coming.
Okay.
So that there's context.
I just didn't know if you'd have that context. And I, I supported it, we, we waited a month, it was, we waited a month to see, did it get better? Did it get worse or did it stay the same? And it's basically stayed the same. And it's probably gonna be okay, but everyone will just breathe a little easier. There's a very identifiable thing we can point out of why this happened. It was an unexpected, um, spike of about five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of insurance. I couldn't tell you exactly which piece, but, uh, anyway, I supported that, uh, at this point because, yeah.
On that topic, uh, you got a half million dollar increase, just for the public, I think they ought to know what the cost of doing, you know, government is. Do you have any idea what the total of that insurance bill is? I mean, is it like three million or four billion?
I don't know, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I mean, it might be worth being, we're talking about increases.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, it wasn't like a hundred percent increase, it's probably a fifteen percent increase or something.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm afraid of, so.
Lot has a lot of, you know, it's a, it's a very, the equipment on that plan is, you know, high dollar and. Okay, and then the last thing, uh, for me is the Capital Lake Chutes Estuary piece. Just, you've all seen it, it was presented to Lot, Skalox Island Tribe was there. Um, the Lot Board, I believe, will be signing on the ILA in October meeting. Just wanted to share that, cause that was a, a big piece that we had in our meeting last week. So that covers external boards and we'll go to Commissioner Items. Until we get Commissioner Mejia, who's here, your turn.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, I also attended the Green Cove Culvert, uh, just a big shout out to Public Works and all the work that they've done. Uh, really on behalf of that project. Um, attended Orca on behalf of Commissioner Klaus. And I'll be sending her a little bit more of a detailed report. But, uh, major things were, uh, bylaws update got, uh, approved as well as electronic signature policy. Um, and so, uh, one good note is that, uh, just based on, um, the cases that they've had and the fines, uh, they had a little bit more cushion than they anticipated this year, so that's good for Orca. Um, I also attended Emergency Food and Shelter Program on behalf of Commissioner Klaus. And for that, we reviewed the FACE forty-one, um, funds that went out and the organizations that received those funds. And so, um, that was really great to hear how, uh, you know, it's not a lot of money, but it really helps organizations. But the big thing about that one is that the United Way in Mason County is shutting down. And so, or they're closing. And so a lot of those funds over the years, I think it's been like four years, have not been expended. And so they have to go ahead and expend. So they're going to be going through another grant cycle for Mason County organizations. And, uh, the Thurston County United Way is going to be kind of taking over that. So, uh, hoping, um, those funds go out to organizations that need it. Um, attended a DES event with Commissioner Mensah and our county manager, um, that the Skalox Island Tribe hosted. Attended inner city transit, um, not much to report there. Uh, attended another transportation of equity and transportation. And that's been a really big conversation in the transportation world in the state. Um, and so, uh, it, it's going to be interesting how equity and transportation is defined and how it really gathers the scope between like urban and rural, as well as the services provided. Um, so that was, that was just a big, heavy topic. Um, and, uh, I'm a kind of looking forward to see what comes out from that. Uh, had a meeting, uh, with Representative Couture in terms of the LRA housing, uh, update that it's coming in front of the board. Let him know what came from the planning commission. And, uh, he's, you know, asked if he could take a look at it. I sent it over to him and he said if he had any comments, he would send it over our way. So, um, I also let him know that, you know, regardless, we would have a public hearing and he was more than welcome to participate in that as well. Had a TRPC meeting as well as a policy committee, subcommittee meeting with, uh, Board of Health. And I attended the Seeds of Change Harvest Event at Family Juvenile Court. And that is all.
Commissioner Edwards.
Maybe just a follow-up if I could with Commissioner Mejia. On the, uh, United Way Fund that they're gonna be disposing of over in Mason County. Mason is part of the Thurston Mason Lewis, uh, Senior Operation. And our senior medical bank, the Medical Equipment Bank. I, I don't know if that's been completely funded for their operation or not to get that building. So I don't know if there's anything new there, but is there a possibility that maybe a piece of that could maybe go towards solving that problem if there still is a problem? I'm just not up on it, maybe.
Yeah, there, there is, uh, I wanna thank Robin for her work with, I think her name is Joyce. Um, but we should be bringing you in the next, uh, little bit. The second part of the ARPA recommendation where the medical bank would be part.
Okay.
Uh, and I believe their request is for fifty-five thousand, um, specifically.
Thank you, just, that's a mute point and just something to look at.
Okay, uh, before I go to Commissioner Items, I meant, I don't usually go through all my community events, but I'm going to just cause I'm gonna miss the board meeting, just for you guys' awareness tomorrow. Um, hopefully Commissioner Fornier can, I'll be here in the morning till eleven, which should cover that. But, um, but I'll miss the board meeting, so I'm just gonna quickly go through what I would report there in case the public's keeping track. Um, Sea Level Rise Committee I attended, we're an executive show member at that. Um, the Board of Health Policy Subcommittee Meeting, the Grub Harvest Soiree Event, uh, the Capital Lake, uh, DES Lunch that Commissioner Mejia referenced. I had an Alliance for Healthy South Sound Executive Committee Meeting. I attended the Innovative Justice Meeting, attended the Homes First Heroes for Housing Breakfast. Had our fifth meeting for the Clean Energy Placement Trans, Tax Transfer Committee with WASAC. Um, I mentioned Lot and OPD. Attended the DR, the Dispute Resolution Center Open House, they have a new director. Uh, the Director Elizabeth Drake, who used to run the Restorative Justice Program and previously worked at Washington State Institute for Public Policy is now their new director. So it's nice to see a friendly face, uh, take the reins there from Jody Serbier, who'd been the previous director. Sent to Guideline Commission Meeting on Friday morning, Mayor's Forum, of course. Uh, and then the Green Cove Culvert Tour that my seatmates were on. And spent the rest of the time, uh, working on an issue regarding the Behavioral Health Resources and the PACT Committee, which is something I learned about. Um, can talk more about that if the board's interested. And then, uh, working more on the, um, response plan that we're gonna be, a draft to circulate to the board on the, um, Board Natural Resources Request from March fifth. So that's my rundown for the last two weeks. With that, we'll go to Commissioner Items, I see Commissioner Mejia's hand.
I don't have a Commissioner Item, I was just gonna ask you, what's the PACT?
Okay, so the PACT, dang it, I won't remember the acronym. It's an, it's an acronym, P-A-C-T. And it's a committee, um, okay, so I'm not gonna get this exactly right. Rob, if he was here, could explain it more, cause he kinda, I, I kinda sub delegated some of the work to him. It originally was a reach out from the Behavioral Health, BHR, who has a half PACT, which is some kind of team that does outreach for Behavioral Health Resources. There's new funding to create a full PACT. And the question was, the BHR was basically coming in saying, why would you stand up? Like, we've got the, you know, workforce is hard, it's hard to find people, we've been doing, we've got a half pack. Why wouldn't you just expand our half to a full? We've got people to train, we've got it up and running, rather than going to some new organization and trying to stand up a full pack. And then you'd have a half here and a full there, they wouldn't be working together, it'd be a waste, it'd be inefficient. So I'd never heard of a PACT. So first I reached out to Public Health and Social Services, uh, staff. They gave me a little bit of background, but they really weren't sure where we should go with it. We talked about maybe bringing it to the Board of Health, but then Rob did some bird dogging for me, checking in with, with the, the BHO, checking in with BHR, kind of seeing what this was all about and kind of ultimately concluding it wasn't an appropriate issue for the Board of Health. Um, but what it was, was something that, um, the BH, basically there was gonna be an RFP for these new resources, for this new PACT. And he thought it was appropriate if, if I as a commissioner wanted to just give a letter of support and say, hey, there'd be, BHR's been doing this well in our community, you might wanna look at them and think about the efficiencies that would result from them taking it over. So he kind of put a letter together that I signed. But then, uh, there's been a few more communications. I had a meeting with Joe Avalos of the TMBH ASO, who wanted to give me some background, um, about it. And, um, so I took that meeting and BHR, I forget the director's name, but I'm probably gonna be setting up a meeting with her, because I don't think I've ever met her. So just in terms of building a relationship and hearing more, rather than exchanging emails, I think I wanna hear it from her mouth, exactly what her ideas and concerns are. So it's just something I've been kind of working on over the last month or so. I don't think there's anything for the board to do at, at this juncture, but if you hear about it, that's what it is. And, and if I learn more, I'll, I'll let everybody know. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you.
I just have some items to.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we're ready or.
Yeah, you're up.
Did anybody get to attend WASAC's noon, noon function today about energy facility, uh, site evaluation?
I did.
Oh, could you, just a little something? I missed it, I wasn't able to go, so just a little tiny something.
Um, it was, they talked a lot about like the committee's makeup and kind of the, uh, them serving in more of a quasi judicial role. Um, and there was gonna be more information to come. Um, there were some areas where I, I honestly kind of got lost. Um, and I was gonna reach out to Paul to kind of walk me through it, um, and see if, you know, for Thurston County specifically, what was, you know, what is our role in that? And, um.
Is this related to the SEPTI thing that I'm sitting on, Clean Energy Placement Tax Impacts?
Well, maybe, I just wanted to, I didn't get into it.
Yeah, it kind of is Commissioner Mensah, right? And it's like a statewide committee that is going to be kind of taking part in kind of these CIPA reviews. And so a lot of the counties there, like I was, there were several times where I was like, am I, do I, should I even be here? Like, um, I was like, does this apply necessarily to Thurston County? And, um, and so that's why I was going to follow up with, uh, with Paul on that. But yes, it, it does relate to kind of the work that you've been doing in your committee.
Paul, I have all the answers, so that's good.
For sure. Okay, go ahead.
The Yom Centralia Power Canal, that's been using up a lot of my time, cause there's a lot of people that are concerned that they're not getting adequate service, if you will, for the tax dollars that they've paid. Because fire trucks can't come across the bridge and, I don't know, medical units can't use some bridges, but they can use others.
Yeah, medic units can use all the bridges except for one, and the one they can't use Centralia Power is.
They're working on?
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, the end result is, uh, the only thing I thought I could help folks with possibly, I don't know that I can, but I wanted the board to be aware and say, yeah, we're interested in at least sending that letter. And that would be, there's an engineering group that has done an evaluation of the bridges. I'll just say the bridges, as far as I know, all the bridges, some are in better, better shape than others. And the City of Centralia has not been willing to release any of that information to the citizens. So they have some sense, are they on one of the bridges that you can't take the horse trailer across? Or the cement truck can't come across, or whatever it could be. And so there's no way for them to know, other than the fire department can't come, kind of with their pump. I think that small outfits could, but maybe a bigger truck couldn't go across. So they would like to know that so that they can plan accordingly. They don't know what that plan's gonna be, they're kind of left out in the dark because, you know, the insurance, what's gonna happen with fire insurance? If you can't get a fire truck to your house, what are they gonna do about that? And, you know, whose responsibility is? Well, we've looked at a lot of paperwork and Judge Dorn has ruled on this years ago that, uh, it's the responsibility of the Centralia Power operation because of latches doesn't apply. I'm just, you know.
Good job.
Okay? And he said that's true, even though there's been a time delay on, on upgrading and maintenance and all that, latches does not apply. So it kind of puts it back on Centralia Power, but they aren't very, very, being very forthcoming about what bridges are the problems. And if this bridge is more of a problem than this bridge, there's possibility that people could use this bridge and bypass this bridge. So I don't know who's holding the liability bag here in the end. But why couldn't we at least send a letter to Centralia from the Board of County Commissioners representing our constituents in the area? That could you release this engineering information? So that these citizens can deal with the situation as best they can. I don't know how to put that together or what the verbiage would be, maybe Legal could think about it or something. But I don't see why these citizens, and there's quite a few that live on the other side of these bridges. Uh, on the one bridge, it's known as the Mazman Bridge, I think there's, I might have this wrong, thirty, thirty residences that have service or something there? So that's just one bridge and I don't know what the rest of them are. And that was my most recent conversation this morning, I'm working on that deal. So I guess what I'm asking, is the board okay endorse, think we ought to do it, send a letter down to Centralia? And see if, on behalf of our constituents that live in Thurston County, that are faced with this problem, could we get some information? I guess they're holding all the information pretty tight. I don't know why.
Um, Commissioner, if I could maybe recommend, or directing me to reach out to the city manager? She's been pretty communicative with me so far about where things are at. She's, she's mentioned that they were working on something. So I could ask, on behalf of the commissioners and the community, if we know when they have, when they plan to release information about the bridges.
That, that, that sounds good. The only reason I even bring this up is in talking to past litigants on this particular issue that Judge Dorn ruled on, and then the appellate court affirmed his ruling, took nine years to get through that. to get through that. These folks are not in a good position to wait nine years without, you know, adequate insurance coverage and services and whatever else, septic tank, pumping truck coming across the, whatever it is. Uh, there's a lot of problems, and I don't think they can wait nine years. And the only reason I say nine years, you know, we all know the government bureaucracy does take some time. Well, the court bureaucracy probably takes a little longer, maybe, but, and then, I don't know, I, I did, I think we've got all that information out to my seatmates on those, those legal papers. There was never a court settlement, actually. Even though Dorn's ruling went to the appellate court, they settled out of court, I think to prevent a precedence from being settled, settled. So they paid off on that particular claim without a final adjudicated settlement, I guess. So, but anyway, I think there's help coming, but it's gonna be a while.
Does this power and Centralia Power and Light, is that what?
Yes.
Are they owned by the city? I mean, are we talking about the city when we talk about?
Yes, yeah. They get about forty percent of their power from our dam. They were a bit forward-thinking back in the thirties, uh, when they saw the possibility of using the Nisqually to power their big power generator down just on the other side of, so the, the dam is on one side of Yelm, and the generator is on the other side of Yelm. And it goes right through the rural portion of Yelm. And they agreed to maintain all these bridges and maintain the canal and all of the above.
Until they decided not to.
Until they decided not to, somehow. Okay. So anyway, can that, i- is everybody okay with the county manager looking into this?
Yep.
This going?
Was it, um, great?
Okay, I don't wanna hog the show, so.
We'll go around and come back to you.
I have your Commissioner Items.
Commissioner, uh, Klaus, do you have an item?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Mejia?
None for me.
Back to you, Commissioner Edwards.
Okay.
Hog the show.
I, I have, have one other issue, and, uh, this, Josh, this ma- mainly does have something to do with you, and I'm, I'm wondering about, I'm getting questions from, uh, the Pantera Group about that large lot subdivision issue.
Staff's working on their response.
Anything new on that? I mean, if I could just give them an R C W, it would be so good.
Your question has been asked of staff, and they're working on their response.
Okay, okay. That has to do with large, large lot subdivision thing. Just a, a maybe a mistake or something, or staff was trying to help out on doing something, and I think two sentences got erased during a modification of something. Nope. It's not a big deal, just everybody's nervous, that has to do with that stuff.
Fair enough.
Okay, I guess that'll do it for me. I won't hog the show anymore.
Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It was a good meeting, and we'll see everyone at nine A M tomorrow.